I'm going to call to order the March 18th Seabrook City Council meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the republic of America, with all due diligence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our Constitution provides that Texas, one state, under God, one law, and one principle.
Yeah, please. Okay, item number one, public comments. At this time, we'd like to listen to any member of the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of four minutes for each speaker. It shall be limited to city business, or city-related business, or matters of general public interest, and should not include any personal attacks. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, members may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. When your name is called, please come to the podium and state your name and address clearly into the microphone before making your comments. Mike Liebel.
Jesse's first, but anyway.
I'm sorry, Jesse's is typed on this. Go ahead, Mike. Everybody else just signed it.
Mike Liebel, 2823 C-Ledge.
There you go. Mike Liebel, 2823 C-Ledge, Seabrook, Texas. Lived here probably thirty-eight years, about the apartment. And I served on part, planning and zoning for four years, ninety-six to two thousand, and I served on council two thousand to two thousand six. I'm here tonight to ask this council to do something, have an action. I'm not here to argue about has the environment north of, north border of Seabrook deteriorated? Because all you gotta do is drive by and see the whole cloud formation that can form, the sound noises we have, and when there's no wind or a north wind, it's, there's a chemical in the air. There's no two ways about it. So I'm not here to argue about that. It's evident, the elephant's in the room, you know? So what I am here to do is I went to Bay Cap, Sea Cap, and I've been around, and it's a network. You're getting free dinners, the, say, everything's peachy. And I all the citizens are sitting there going, really? And they only report on exceedances of their air permits. So if everything's fine, they're doing everything fine by the air permit they got, it's all good. So the air permits are given by whom? TCEQ, Texas Commission on Environmental Quality. Okay, that's where the air permits are given. The northern plants industrialization, North Taylor Lake, has got three more plants, north of us has got two more plants expansions, and they're all air permits. I checked on the database, they have been given by TCEQ. TCEQ, on their website, respond to requests for public information through telephone calls, correspondence, emails, in a timely, efficient manner, establish channels for public participation. Most of those permits were given during COVID, by the way. Nobody showed up to the meetings. But anyway, and then they have track and respond to customer service complaints, maintain safe, clean, accessible facilities across the state. Their mission statement, now here's where the crux is, the mission statement is the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality strives to protect our state's public health and natural resources consistent with sustainable economic development. That's probably where they're putting their hats on. Our goal is clean air, clean water, and safe management of waste. So, I don't know, I don't know, I know several students that I haven't told anybody I was going to be here. I'm probably going to come back in April, and I will tell some people that I'll be here, and I'm sure they'll show up. But I thought I'd do this first round by myself. So what I'm asking this council to do, and I see the city attorneys here, and do a open records request to TCEQ. An open records request can be in the form of, and I would help anybody to be part of it, the city of Seabrook requests all analysis performed are received from an applicant are performed by TCEQ on environmental and health impacts of all air permits released in the last ten years within three miles of the northern border of Seabrook. Now, I've done a lot of analysis. We could even get smart and say over a certain poundage, you know, so you don't get car manufacturers and paint stores and stuff like that, right? You don't want to, you know, want to pinpoint what it is. And just see what they say. I bet you they say none. And that's unbelievable, because we've got acrylic acid, Bay Star, we got Air Products, North Lake, just piling down here when the north wind comes out. I sit on the lake with some friends across, you know, across the street, and sometimes you're going, wow, we've got to go inside. You know, and that, it was never that way. I've been in that subdivision for thirty years, thirty-three years, ninety-one, twenty-five. So, I enjoyed Seabrook with the nice, fresh breezes that we get. And now when the north wind, our zero wind, zero wind, comes around, you know, it bothers me. Now, it does bother a lot of people, you know, it doesn't bother everyone, but it probably affects them. So, that's what I'm asking the city to do. City council, you have executive session, I'm well familiar with that, with Buddy, we know, all the time we went back there, just talk about it and vote on it, you know? I mean, it'd be a good sell. Well, they're probably going to answer zero, but at least you, the citizen will know. Oh, and by the way, before I forget, okay, Sea Cap, you know where they hold their meetings? Mayor and Colonel Office, I got to fight fifteen thousand trailers to get in there and even say anything, and if I don't show up one time, I'm taken off the list. We ought to hold that Sea Cap meeting here, in this council chamber, right here. You know, because it's affecting the people, North Mystic Village, Lake Point Forest, really bad. I, I know the police station has gotten some calls, but, oh, overtime. I thought it was under, it's minus. Thank you, anyway.
Thanks, Mike.
Mm-hmm.
Jesse Jones. All right, Mr. Jesse, you're, you're written in little letters up here.
I'll be short to make up for Mike going overtime. Certainly. Jesse Jones, fourteen twenty-one, Toddville. Mayor council, I told you that I would keep you appraised of the JP Byers residency issue. In my last email to council, I questioned the nine-month time period that Mr. Byers had listed as his length of residency. As we all know, one year is the minimum amount of time required to establish residency in Seabrook. That email was forwarded to Mr. Byers, and he reacted as I had hoped, and turned in additional information to the city secretary to establish his residency. I was quite disappointed when, after another FOIA request, I was rewarded with a receipt from a delivery company and a receipt showing that he'd apparently pays his sister-in-law's electric bill. No sign of a lease, which of course would go a long way in proving residency. Mr. Byers once again texted me that he had turned in additional information and surprised me with the comment, "There is nothing the city can do about it." Interesting comment from a guy who has nothing to hide. So at the end of the day, we have no idea where Mr. Byers maintains his residence, and only have the figure of nine months that he put on his application to run for council to establish any kind of a timeline. And now he informs us that there's nothing the city can do about it. His words, not mine. And the heck of it is, he's right. Apparently, our requirements to run for office in the city of Seabrook are just a suggestion. There are no guidelines for staff when someone presents unsubstantiated information, or information that raises questions. There's nothing in place that allows staff to ask for proof of residency, citizenship, or anything. It's the honor system. It's now quite obvious that we can no longer assume that the information that people provide on this very important document is truthful. To Mr. Byers' point, there is nothing we can do about it. My ask is this. We have another election coming up in a little over a year. I would like to see our current requirements to run for office codified, establishing clear guidelines to staff to be able to request proof of residency and any other information that they feel is necessary. This will give candidates that are less than honest with their answers a choice to either follow the rules or withdraw their name from consideration. It should not be the duty of the citizens to establish whether a candidate is lying on their application or not. It should not be the duty of the citizens to determine whether a candidate meets the requirements for the office they seek. It's the job of the city to protect us from unqualified candidates. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Tom Taylor.
I've been a resident for eleven years, but I'm not running for anything, I promise. I'm here to speak on behalf of CAD, give the city a little update. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am an officer, director and legal counsel for CAD, Citizens Against Derelict Dumping. It is a Texas nonprofit, a 501(c)(3) charity. As 501(c)(3) charity, we're prohibited from trying to influence.
Let me interrupt you.
Sure, sure.
You're on the agenda. So, do you want to speak on public comments, or you want to wait for the agenda?
Oh, I, I don't, no, I, no, I'm on the agenda.
We should have, we should have caught that.
I thought you were calling me for the.
We should have caught that. Yeah, you were signed on the.
Yeah, I did.
On the public speaker. Okay, thank you.
I'll go back down.
Yeah, yeah. You'll, you'll be up in about an hour and a half.
Put him on overtime.
Before you report in my press conference, I know I'm on the list, but I had no intention to steal you, but since.
Sure, you're allowed. You're allowed.
Can you take one of those and pass one to Tom Talat?
Just take one, just each one of you. No, not everybody doesn't need one, I'm just saying, one to you, Tom, and one to Joe. Joe, do you mind telling me what you have in your hand?
We can't, we're not.
Okay.
You'd speak of public comment.
What you find is, is Joe has my concealed permit. My concealed carry permit has my address, three, six, six, three, Nassau Parkway, apartment number four, one, four. It's a condo that my sister-in-law bought. She wanted to buy it as a investment property. She wasn't quite ready to move here from New Jersey. I pay the mortgage. The mortgage comes out of my account directly. I don't pay my sister-in-law, and then her pay it. It comes out of my account. I see Jesse decided to up and leave. So then, on top of that, the actual checks for every single time the HOA has been paid, which is every month, it's seven hundred and ninety-four dollars, and it just went up for next month to eight hundred and fourteen dollars, comes out of my account. I drive to Seabrook Real Estate Company, right there, next to Seabrook Classic Cafe, I write the check out, and I sign it. My dogs get walked in the yard that's right there next to it. My point, when I told Jesse was the city couldn't do anything about it, was because when I filed for my actual running in city council, was I saw the charter. I actually read the charter, imagine that. And I saw what the charter said, and I was worried that somebody would question my actual residency here. So I went straight to Mandy, I went straight to Rachel. I asked them, is this going to be a problem? Because the last thing I want to do as a guy running on transparency is start by lying how long I've currently lived here. However, as of May first, my residency is here. And last time I checked, it doesn't matter whether you meet the mark by a minute or a year, you still meet the mark. So as of May first, I will have twelve months. And the reason I told Jesse Jones was the city can't do anything about it is because that's what Ms. Gale has told me, that's what Mr. Rachel and Ms. Mandy have all told me, is that the city doesn't do anything. They're a reporting agency, and if anybody has a problem, they will have to file with the Secretary of State. So please, by all means, if y'all have problems with my legitimacy as a resident in the Seabrook of Tex, in the city of Seabrook of Tex, city of Seabrook, then please, file it with the Secretary of State. You have every right to do so. Any citizen has the right to do so. It's not that big of a deal. It doesn't hurt my feelings. I meet the mark, I have the proof. Nobody has asked anybody else's for leases or proof of it anywhere along the way. I've got any, as much information as you want. I'm here. I've been here. Sorry?
Any comments? Thank you. Okay, one point one. Mayor, city council, and our members of city staff may make announcements about city community events.
Okay, Friday, March twenty-first, from ten to eleven, at the Metter Library, it'll be crafts with a cop. Then on Thursday, March twenty-seventh, from six to seven-thirty here at City Hall, there'll be a town hall meeting. On Saturday, March twenty-ninth, starting, registering at James Bay Elementary at eight-thirty to nine, there'll be the trash bash. And of course, let's not forget to register to vote by April the third.
Anybody else?
Yeah, April twenty-sixth, we're going to have the flag retirement ceremony over at the Bay Area Veterans Memorial. That'll be at nine AM in the morning.
Anyone else? Okay. Presentations, two point one. Mayor to recognize the city of Seabrook Finance Department for receiving the certificate of achievement of, for excellence in financial reporting from the Governmental Financial Finance Officers Association of the United States. You guys want to come up? You got them? I'm pleased to announce that the Finance Department has been awarded the certificate of achievement.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah. Can I start over again? Now that the short guy came by? I am, I am pleased to announce that the Finance Department has been awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFO of the United States and Canada. The GFO certificate of achievement is the pinnacle of recognition in the field of governmental accounting and financial reporting. This, excuse me, this award signifies that our financial reports have been demonstrated to be clear, comprehensive, coherent, and a coherent overview of our city's financial status, all while adhering to the highest standards of excellence in reporting practices. It is a remarkable accomplishment to showcase the Finance Department's ability to maintain integrity and clarity in its financial communications to our citizens. Earning this award is not easy. It requires an attention to detail, a deep understanding of financial regulations, and a commitment to ethical practices. The Finance Department, under the leadership of Mike Gibbs, has gone above and beyond taking the challenges of public finance with diligence and tenacity. As part of this recognition, I would like to acknowledge the vital role played by Mike Gibbs and Catherine Shanahan for earning the award financial reporting achievement, which honors those with primary responsibilities for earning the GFO award. This is well-deserved recognition that emphasizes the collaborative effort of the entire Finance Department, the guidance and leadership of Mike, and the support of our city administration. On behalf of the city council and the residents of Seabrook, thank you to the Finance Department for your outstanding contributions. Your hard work does not go unnoticed, and we look forward to seeing and continuing impact of your efforts to our city. Thank you. You want pictures? We got anybody here to take pictures? No, never mind.
My down.
Okay, two point two. Presentation by Citizens Against Derelict Dumping, on derelict boats, the problems, impacts, and laws for owners. Now, Tom.
Okay. Thank you again, Mayor, Council, for the opportunity to speak. As I was saying, CAD is a Texas nonprofit IRS five oh three, five oh one(c)(3) charity corporation. We have no salaried employees. All of our officers and directors are volunteers. We take and cannot take any compensation. We are funded totally and completely by donors, mostly citizens who are interested in our lake and our environment. To date, about thirty percent of our donations to CAD have come from us, the directors of the organization. We have applied for a federal grant. We're seeking an eighty-five thousand dollar grant from the government being administered by Boat U.S. We are waiting on results of that, although Doge may throw us out the window, we don't know. But we hope to get that, so we'll have funding to help remove some of the boats. What is our mission? First of all, our mission is to try and bring public awareness to the derelict and abandoned boats in our area, and mainly on Clear Lake. We try to work with government officials, the GLO, municipalities, law enforcement, to identify these boats that have been abandoned. And then, once they are identified by the GLO, it is our mission and goal to try and facilitate their removal. We do that by spending our money to hire people to tow the boats off, get them out of the lake, get them ashore, get them disposed of. Also, part of our public campaign is we have monthly public meetings, as I said, open to the public, to try and inform people of what's going on, as well as get feedback from the public. Clear Lake, as y'all probably know, are this area's third-largest recreational boating area in the United States of America. In this area, we have approximately nineteen marinas. We have over seven thousand registered boats in this area. Currently on Clear Lake, there are eighteen boats, maybe nineteen as of today. This is an increase of seventeen from three years ago. Three years ago, we had only one permanently anchored or moored boat on Clear Lake. Today, we have eighteen. Fortunately, we're down ten from a month ago, I mean, from four months ago, where we had twenty-eight boats. Of the eighteen boats, five of them are sunken, are underwater, thirteen afloat, six, we believe, are live aboard, leaving seven of them are unoccupied on anchor. Five of those thirteen are improperly lighted. They do not comply with Coast Guard rules and regulations with respect to proper lighting on anchor at night, so they represent an unusually hazardous situation for navigation and safety. Some of the live aboard don't even have power on their boats, or engines on their boats that work. In this recent windstorm we had, one boat was piled up by, on the breakwater over at Marine Max, had to be towed back out so it could be put back on its anchor, because it has no engine. We suspect that many of these boats that are anchored out there and they live aboard are dumping sewage overboard, because they don't have any way to get to a pump-out station. So bottom line is, is these boats out there, many of them being derelict and abandoned, they represent a safety hazard, they represent a navigational hazard, and they represent a probable environmental hazard if they sink. So what is our process for removal? First of all, you have to understand it is not against the law to anchor a boat in Texas waters. As long as you own the boat and are taking care of it, it's not a problem. You can anchor anywhere you want. So what we're trying to do, well, it is, let me back up, it is illegal to anchor a boat in Texas waters if you are abandoning that boat. That would be an. That would be an illegal disposal of solid waste. The problem here is, is who is abandoning these boats and who's not? So one of the things that we try to do, work with the GLO, is identify these boats that are in fact being abandoned. The GLO attempts to notify or find the owners of these boats. They try to do it by personal notice or contact if they can. That's pretty much impractical in many of these cases. They try a written notice by sending notice to the registered owner that their boat's out there, if they're, to claim it and step forward. If they can't do that, the GLO does something that's, I think, is a great idea. They post the boat to try and get notice to the owner that the boat is out there. Come claim your boat. If nobody comes and claims the boats, then the GLO will tag, or what we call "tag that boat" for disposal and removal. There are currently five boats out there that are tagged for removal. What we do at this point in time, this is really and truly when we get involved at CAD, what we try to do is then facilitate or work with Towboat U.S., Sea Tow or others, to try and get the boat towed from its anchored position, or hopefully, if it's not sunk. But if it's sunken, we try to raise the boat, and it's not us personally, we don't touch the boats. We don't have the insurance to do it, or the money to do it. But we do try to hire people who do, like Towboat U.S. They have environmental insurance, they have insurance if something happens to cover any damage that might happen. So we will hire them to try and get the boat removed and out of the water. There are a lot of pieces have to fall into place to get this done. We have to arrange somebody, somewhere, to take possession of the boat, to either crush it, cut it up, or whatever. But before it can be done, that can be done, all the fluids have to be removed out of, talking diesel, gasoline, oil, chemicals of any type that may be hazardous to the environment. Those things can't go into landfills. And then we also have, they also have to have removed your electronics that contain heavy metals like mercury. So all that has to be done once the boat is ashore, and then the boat can be crushed or chopped up. It goes into a Dempsey dumpster and then goes into a landfill. Well, that costs, on average, about $15,000 to $20,000 per boat. That's why it's important to us, at least, to try and get this grant from the federal government, so we can be a part of that. Costs more if the boat's sunken, because it's hard to raise some of these boats. If the tide is out and the gunwales are above the waterline, we can put pumps on it and get it pumped out, or we can get Boat U.S. or somebody to pump them out. Most of the times, they will float, and then they can be towed off. Some legal updates. Yeah, I'm sure y'all are aware that Dennis Paul has introduced a bill to take a portion of every boat that is registration fee and give it to the GLO, so they can have funds to try and remove some of these boats. I think that's a start, but as usual, just throwing money at a problem is not gonna actually solve the long-term problem. In fact, it may even make it worse, because once these people with the derelict boats know that somebody's gonna take care of their problem for them, it fosters more people to dump their boats, or that's what we fear. There's, interestingly enough, a bill from the Texas, about the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department, I talked about this, to do away with that agency. Their responsibilities will be divided up between the GLO, the Texas Agriculture Department, and the Department of Public Safety for law enforcement. Those are, those are some of the solutions, but I think the real solution to this, well, you probably also know that El Lago is trying to draft a city ordinance. I haven't seen it. I assume it's going to have to do with permitting on anchoring in their municipality and limiting anchoring in their municipality. But like I said, I haven't seen it. Those are all steps in the right direction, but I honestly think, and CAD thinks, that the answer to the problems are in Austin, that Austin needs to pass some laws, starting in. And the other thing is, we have laws on the books that aren't being enforced right now. It's, you know, it's against the law to anchor out in Clear Lake without proper anchor lights. It's against the law to own or possess a boat in the state of Texas that's not registered. I mean, just owning one, that's not, doesn't have a current registration, is a violation of law. It's against the law in the state of Texas, if you own a boat, to sale or transfer the title to that boat to a third party without notifying the Texas Parks and Wildlife. One of the problems the GLO has run into is when they find the owner of some of these boats and try to hold them responsible, they say, "I don't own anymore. I sold that boat." "Well, who did you sell it to?" "Oh, I can't remember his name." "Well, do you have any documentation?" "No, I threw that away a long time ago." So the GLO is right back to where it started. They don't know who owns the boat. But the law requires that if you sell a boat or transfer title, you've got to notify the Parks and Wildlife. So I think the state of Texas needs to promulgate a law that says, as long as you are the registered owner of that boat, you're responsible for it, you're liable for it. If that boat causes personal injury or causes damage, property damage, or has an environmental spill, if you're the registered owner, you should be responsible for it until you notify Parks and Wildlife that you sold it. Another thing, I've talked with Tom, and I actually talked with Dennis Paul about this, tie your boat, oh, well, one, require boat owners to have insurance. If you own or operate a car in the state of Texas, you're required to have liability insurance. Why not require that on boats? And then tie that into, not only your registration, but tie it into your driver's license. You own a boat, you don't have proof of insurance with the Parks and Wildlife, you can't renew your driver's license. Put some pressure on these people to comply with the law. Those are just some thoughts. I'm ready and willing and able to, well, ready and willing, maybe not able, to try and answer questions if anybody has any.
Yeah, so you said there's laws. What are the, okay, if there's a law that says that you can't anchor your boat without proper lighting or without the registration, then what is the, what is the fine, or what is the consequence for doing that?
Classy misdemeanor under Texas, so the consequences aren't real high for it. I think that that's another thing. I think the state should have stricter, more stringent, or higher fines, or higher repercussions for violating those laws, because they're really safety laws.
Well, who's the agency that would be giving that ticket? Can they just start ticketing them?
Well, Texas Parks and Wildlife can do it if they can find the owner. Any marine, certified marine safety officer can do it, and that's one of the problems right now in Texas. To enforce the Parks and Wildlife Safety Boating Rules and Regulations, you have to be a certified marine safety officer, and there are not a whole lot of them around. I understand, Tom told me, we at, the City of Seabrook has two, but, you know, my position is, if you're a certified peace officer, you're sworn to uphold the Constitution, the laws of the state of Texas. You ought to be able to enforce any laws of the state of Texas, but there's a carve-out in Parks and Wildlife that says only marine, certified marine safety officers can enforce it. Coast Guard can enforce it, but they won't, can't even get the Coast Guard in here. Thank you for your question. Anything else?
Part of the issue is, is that we, yes, we may have two people that are certified. We don't have the budget at this time. We have budget time coming up in the summer, and we're gonna have to take a real hard look at it, and I don't wanna put you on the spot, Chief, but if you could give us just a little bit of information about the Marine Division.
Yes, sir. Pardon my attire, I was training for the last two days, so I don't typically like this look. As far as the Marine Safety Enforcement Officer Program, we do have two, that is correct. We also have two captains that can captain our patrol boat. Happens to be the same two individuals. I'm going through the MISO training now, the Marine Safety Enforcement Officer, and I'm gonna get, I wanna get the younger officers involved, because they're gonna be around a lot longer. So that's my plan, but we're gonna have probably two or three more by the summer that we can put out there. But then there's also the problem of getting captains for our patrol boat, so that we can actually safely get out on the water and operate.
Thank you.
Did that answer your question, sir?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Yes, sir.
May I try and answer any other questions? Marcia, do you wanna speak?
No.
She'll reserve that for me at home.
I got a question. Okay, with regard to the certified marine safety officers, are there any other communities around the lake that have that within their police department?
The answer to that is, I don't know. I would certainly hope so. When El Lago passes their city ordinance, or it comes up with the one, I would hope to see and like to see all of the municipalities enter into some type of agreement where you can all, there's a provision in Parks and Wildlife, if you're all part of a joint agreement, that officers from Seabrook can enforce the marine laws in, like League City. So if you have that joint agreement among cities, any marine certified officer from any of the cities can enforce the law, the marine safety laws.
Yeah, because I don't think we just want Seabrook to have to shoulder the whole thing, when we've got League City and Nassau Bay and Houston, et cetera, that, you know, could chime in on this.
There's a lot of municipalities, if you, you know, it seems like to me, if you could work together, you might be able to have some effect on the water, so. But I don't know if any of the other cities have certified marine officers.
Do you have any other cities that you'd represent, representing, like any of those other cities that come to those meetings, beside, I know, we have Seabrook, but I mean, there are quite a few other cities, so.
Absolutely. Nassau Bay has been showing, in fact, we've been having our meetings in Nassau Bay. Shore Acres, not Shore Acres.
Clear Lake Shores.
Clear Lake Shores has been pretty active. And yes, other municipalities have councilmen, El Lago has had people come to our meetings. So, you know, and we're pleased with that. We'd like more, but we're pleased, because they're, they do show an interest in recognizing the problem and are looking for solutions, like everybody.
Sure, I mean, and I hope we could collaborate with all of the cities, because it's all of our problem, you know? So, thanks.
Well, Tom, you know, why, again, I think I know the answer, but why, when we call every time on these boats, "The Coast Guard"? When they're sitting in the lake with no lights on at night, half-sunk, why, and it's truly a boating hazard, it's the Coast Guard's responsibility to take care of that. I know, they'll pass it on to the GLO, but upfront, it's the Coast Guard. They're responsible for our navigable waterways. And why is it that we, they won't even respond? They won't even answer the calls?
I can't answer that. We've had the same problem. We've tried to call them, communicate with them. Their position pretty much is, unless they are anchored in a channel, we don't have time for that. And there are other law enforcement, Harris County has marine safety officers, they have a marine division. They won't come up here and do anything.
Well, I think the county today pulled that boat away from the, from the gate.
I stand corrected on one incident.
Well, yeah, I think they pulled it about 10 feet away from it and left it. But, yeah, it's been a problem, I mean, we've been struggling with this. We did end up taking one boat out ourselves at substantial cost. That was in the bay.
Yeah, I recall that.
That sailboat. You know, but, you know, 18 boats, from what that cost us, you know, we'd be into the $200,000, $300,000 numbers to take care of this. It's gotta be taken care of by the state, and somebody's gotta step up.
Yeah, well, we're hoping, as I said, fingers crossed, that we will get this grant, which will give us $85,000, which will go a long way to getting rid of some of these boats that are out there now.
Yeah, it's become a huge problem. It's been a problem now for a year, ever since that marina across the way had that auction, and they all ended up in the lake.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate it. Anybody else got any questions?
I thank the city for the opportunity to come speak, and I'm available. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to try and contact me through CAD, or my phone, whatever. I'll be glad to help in any way I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. Just keep going off. 2.3. Presentation regarding a farmer's market to be held at, by Pasadena Farmer's Market at City Park or City Facility. Kaylee?
You have your presentation? There you go. Okay, awesome.
Miguel.
How do we turn this on? Oh, is it on?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so first, we'd like to thank you.
You better talk to either of the mic.
Sure, no worries, no worries. So first, we'd like to thank the City of Seabrook and council members for your time. My name's Miguel. I go by Mike. This is my beautiful wife, Kayla. I've been a local Realtor for the past seven years. We're proud owners of Texas Markets, and we manage Pasadena Farmer's Market. Our purpose for being here is to seek your help and introduce the idea of Seabrook's newest addition, which would be essentially Seabrook's Farmer's Market. We are here to seek your help, because we've come to our attention by one of your council members, that there's a limitation in Seabrook for four special events a year. And as you're aware, you know, we manage Pasadena Farmer's Market, and we talk to citizens often, and we're involved in the community, and we often hear that one Farmer's Market a month is not enough. So four a year would not be enough to get, you know, local produce, things that you can't find in supermarkets, like local honey, produce, handmade products. So we're here to seek maybe some answers and help to figure out why there's a limitation of four per year. I don't know if you have anything else that you wanna add, you know, obviously more, but regarding the question?
That was it.
Yeah?
Just that question.
Okay, you can go to the next one if you want. So we'd like to talk to you, we'd like to just reiterate some of the historical facts about farmer's markets and then what they do to economies, because historically, they've been known to be central to, you know, to local economies. They facilitate trade, right? We'd like to point out some of the pros, which help, I would say, any city, which one of the biggest ones, we've obviously put it in bold here, it would be to, it promotes tourism, right? Tourism means new talents, new talents means new businesses. New businesses means boosting the economy, right? So this just helps keeps the money within the economy, creates new jobs. Nowadays, it promotes healthy eating, healthier habits, which are necessary, I believe, with things that are going on with the local produce and, you know, things that are put in our food. So besides obviously being a gathering place, where we'd like to introduce the idea of, because other cities are joining in with us, like I've mentioned, right now, we're partnering with City of Pasadena, they're more than excited to start this. We're also talking to other cities, because it seems like some of these cities are jumping into the farmer's market. mentioned, right now, we're partnering with City of Pasadena. They're more than excited to start this. We're also talking to other cities because it seems like some of these cities are jumping into the Farmer's Market. So we'd like to introduce the idea. We wanted to know why there's a limitation of four per market, or four per year. If anyone knows, we'd invite, you know, to get, please give us an answer. You can go to the next one if you want. Anything else? So we'd like to propose, or, you know, our purpose here is to ask for your help, and, and we really want to know what the limitations are and why there's only a four. And if, I'm sure someone here has gone to a Farmer's Market before, once you get a local product that you can't find at the supermarket, it's, you're, you know, you look for the next one, which there's, pretty popular one would be Mont Belvieu. You know, they have one once a month, and we go to it. Everyone there has a complaint that why it only happens once a month, because they can't, they, once you get something, you need it at least once a week or twice a week, right?
Fresh eggs, sourdough.
All the produce that you can not find, you know, especially just talking about eggs right now, you know?
Yeah.
Right? So that's our proposal is, is why there's a limitation of four, and we'd like to propose having one here twice a month at.
Either Rex Meter or the Seabrook Community House.
Yes.
Whichever works best with y'all, really.
We are also open to any questions or any comments.
Sean, do we, what's the ordinance on Farmer's Markets? Do we have, do we have a specific ordinance, or it's always called a special event? It's always, a Farmer's Market is a special event? So it falls under the special event category?
Should it be a special event? Like, why are we limited to four when these, one, lots of these products are essential, like honey for allergies, just an example? Do we know why there's a limitation of four?
I, I don't. I don't know why a Farmer's Market should be. Some of the greatest cities in the world have Farmer's Markets.
Absolutely.
We travel around the world, these, I mean, the Farmer's Markets are actually what draws everybody into the community, especially on the weekends. Traveled all over, my family travels all over, and, you know, they have flowers, they have local honey, they have all sorts of things, and that's where people get their, their stuff for the week. So twice, twice a month throughout the year should be no issue. I have no idea. I guess it's just an antiquated thing that we have on our books, but it needs to be changed because it's, it's not like you're, you know, you're not shooting submachine guns out at Metter Park or.
Right.
Or at the Community House. You're selling food. So, you know, unless someone considers a carrot dangerous, or, you know, a rutabaga, something really bad, then yes, that's the problem. But I, I don't know why you would not be able to do that twice a month for the, for 12 months.
Agree. We just need to look at the ordinance again. But I guess because nobody's really come up here and started to, to create this. We had in the past, and they've done it, but never realized it was only four times. So that's, that's definitely an issue. And I, I agree with Joe. I think we need to have it a little bit more often, and it could be great, especially at the Community House. I think you need to have it more closer to the freeway, because again, you're talking about people stopping.
Sure.
You know, if, if it's a good event and they see tents and stuff, they'll more likely pull over and stop. And if it's a great event, they will come back.
Absolutely.
And they'll look for hotel stays. So I can see that, that happening. But again, I think it's either got to be on Main Street or something there, close by that, so people can see something's going on.
Absolutely.
And they'll want to stop. So.
I got a question.
Do you, do you have, are you doing any of them now?
Yeah, absolutely. We do them in Pasadena. We do them at Pasadena Crenshaw Park, and they.
Can you give us just a little hint of your, your model, your business model?
We, we have a, we have a video for you if that's.
Okay, how long is it?
A minute.
Just a minute. One minute. Won't be long.
Uh, it's not.
And it's not playing.
Yep.
That works. So, so.
So you're renting booths.
Questions, so tell me, tell me.
So you're renting booths and you need, what kind of facilities? Porta potties, that sort of thing? Is that?
Well, the restrooms are needed, obviously, right? But they're usually at City Parks, so that, that's never really a problem.
I see.
But as far as your question, I just want to clarify that I'm answering your question. Is that?
Okay, okay.
What would be needed is a public restroom and concrete, pretty much. Like, the Health Department will require concrete.
How many participants do you normally have?
We are in touch with more than we can hold at where we're at. I have been in touch with around 150 to 200 vendors that are interested in these events. I have to rotate them.
These are all completely different businesses.
Right.
So basically, your model is that you manage several of these going on at the same time? Is that, now, is that the way I understand that?
Yes, yes. So we manage the markets and essentially some of the cities.
And the vendors.
Right.
Set up.
Partner with us to, to help facilitate city events as well.
And the vendors, vendors bring everything, tables?
They bring their, they bring their own setup, yes. It's their business.
They need their own tent, their own table, their own chair, their own.
So essentially, the city doesn't do anything to have these events. We just pretty much bring it to them. That's what we're working with with Pasadena as well right now, is they want us to facilitate their city events. So like Christmas, Halloween, whenever they have their events, they want to have like a small market to help boost, because this brings people out, you know? It makes your events better, essentially.
You said one of the, one of the requirements was concrete, or can it be gravel, or?
So we'd like to, we, we need to.
Because neither of the places you mentioned really have too much concrete.
Sure.
It's just the food, if they're serving hot food, they have to be on concrete, or they have to put down a tarp. But, I mean, that's not really an issue. It would just be preferred that if there's concrete, you know?
Okay, okay. I just wanted to be sure.
What, what, what are the expectations of the city in terms of support, or?
I mean, it, it would be nice if we could just get a little bit of advertisement help.
Social media, that's it.
And then more than four times a year, really.
But, but as far as actual support by the city, is that going to involve personnel or anything like that?
If the event were, in the case of the event being a larger crowd, then we would need police department and something like that, you know, security purposes. But in the event of local, smaller, biweekly events, we wouldn't need police.
Okay.
So essentially, just social media.
Like, if, if you hypothetically need police, or, I mean, what, what support staff, what, what do you need for the city? Because if we provided the piece of property, and all of a sudden, you get 300, 400 people there, and all of a sudden, what if you don't have a police officer there? You gonna, are we gonna need police there now that somebody is, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out all the diligence and.
I guess if I could put it in a way that you could picture, it would be like going to, I don't know, let's see, the boardwalk, you know? There's, we've had multiple, sometimes more than four, 500 people, 1,000 people, and it's, it's a great time, you know?
Yeah. No, I agree. I am not questioning that.
Grab some food.
And maybe this may not be a question for you, but maybe for you, Sean, what kind of insurance or liability would we need if we allowed them to use our facility?
Well, if I can digress a little bit, I'll kind of explain how our ordinances are written currently and why this falls under special events. So currently in our zoning ordinance in the land use matrix, Farmer's Markets are only permissible by conditional use within Old Seabrook. Typically, these type of businesses are, they are held or they operate on private property, not on public property. So there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that gives them any permissions to operate on public property within our park. So it triggers the special events permit process. And it's been interpreted for multiple years that you're only, you're restricted to four special events permits a year. We've dealt with that with other operations in the city recently. So that's kind of how the zoning is, how it works, and that's how it's all circulated back to the four events a year. If there's, if it's the will of City Council to modify the zoning ordinance to broaden the allowance of Farmer's Markets, then staff's definitely more than willing to work with P and Z and go through that process. We just need that guidance. There's a whole, there's a conditional use allowance, and then there's specifications within our zoning ordinance around Farmer's Markets right now that even prescribes how they have to operate, how the bathrooms have to be in place. It was something that was done probably 15, 16 years ago, when I first started here, somebody, when Kelly was still here, it was something that they dealt with at that time. So that, that just gives you some background on where, how it goes from being on private property, operating under the zoning ordinance, to them wanting to use public property to operate this business twice a month, and it triggers the special events permit process.
So, so the ones that they were having in the past in Old Seabrook, while back, they were on private, private property.
That's correct.
So that's why they were doing it, and that's kind of why, I guess, they're not doing it.
Well, and if you think back through the process, Jennifer's Treasures, I believe it is, the couple Farmer's Markets that we have currently in the community, they had to go through planning and zoning and City Council to get a conditional use permit to operate that use in Old Seabrook. So they went through their due diligence in the process. This is a unique request, because again, they're wanting to operate a private business in a city park, and it requires special permissions by City Council, how our ordinances are currently written.
So, so what are the ramifications of, if we approve them to have 24 Farmer's Markets throughout the year on, at a park, what, what do we have to do to do that? Can we just allow it?
We have a special, special event permits in the city park is set up by ordinance already.
And that's a special event?
It is a special event. I guess the question would be for council or the applicant, if you're asking for us to waive our fees. I think that goes back to the question of support. Are you looking for us to waive all fees?
We don't need fees waived.
Okay. Not, not all fees, I mean.
But, but the fees are minimal.
Minimal, yeah, that's.
Better, better park is, our Community House is not. So that would be something if council wanted to grant that. I think we're, y'all are doing on a Saturday?
The plan is to do.
So I think it's like $400. I don't know if that's within y'all's budget, but.
But this is for the outside, not the inside.
Yeah.
Okay, but you'd need the restrooms?
We'd need the restroom.
So we'd have to work around that, figure that out, or if you can get a porta potty out there, I don't know what the cost is for that, but.
Restrooms are accessible from the outside.
Are they?
Yeah. It would just be, we wouldn't be able to lease the property. I wouldn't, y'all are gonna take up the front lawn and the parking? Right. Yeah, so we couldn't lease the property.
On those days?
Yeah.
What is the better place for you? Metter Park or right here at the community center?
Well.
What about Pine Gully Park at the water?
Um, I don't think I've looked at that one. It was, I was really just leaving it open to y'all, because I know that people rent out Metter Park, but I wasn't sure how often it's rented out. And I didn't know if that was going to be like something that stopped y'all from saying yes.
Yeah, that could be a problem with Community House. I mean, I'm, I'm all for this. I'm just trying to find a location for it.
And y'all are looking to do the pavilion, the concrete pavilion? Right. Where the basketball court is? Yes. Okay, so it'd be two Saturdays, taking up the basketball. I think that was part of the parks.
How long, how long does it last? I mean, from nine in the morning until noon, or what?
Well, we did have 11 to 3, but, I mean, nothing's.
No, that's fine.
In concrete.
No, I don't want to change your hours. I'm just asking.
Yeah. I mean, in Pasadena, we, we just went ahead and made it from 11 to 5, because it's on a Sunday. People like coming after church. But since this is a Saturday, we could do it earlier.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like this. And it sounds like everybody's pretty much in favor. It's just we just got to get that changed so we can get that, the details worked out, so you guys can do this. So, you know, I, I like it a lot. And I think it would be a, a neat little thing for Seabrook to have, so.
Yeah.
I agree. And also, with Genuine Treasures, it's, it's really an art market. So this is, we don't have anything like this. And I think this would be add value to Old Seabrook or wherever you decide. I think if we could do it over here at Vice, you know, at the Community House, I think it would be nice, because it is closer to the freeway. We are trying to bring more things down here. It would be, it would be.
As long as we can get the city's help to bring people out, we'd, wherever you guys propose, we'd be open to it.
Have, have we had any residents ask for this? Any of our residents from Seabrook have asked for this?
Not that I remember.
No, I think in, in prior strategic planning for City Council, you guys have talked about this in the past, and the pros and cons of city staff trying to run it as opposed to finding someone like this that already has the expertise and the permits, because there's certain permits through the county that you have, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
So somehow, we would, we would really need to give everyone an opportunity. I mean, you just can't, just, they've made a great presentation. It sounds wonderful. But you also have to give it to the others that live in Seabrook as well, to me.
They're trying to do it already.
Yeah.
So, anyway, I hope that we can work towards, you know, maybe carving something out and
putting something together that, that might help this, this event.
Well, I don't know. We got, we got a bird in the hand, and, and, you know, they're here.
I'm not opposed to that.
Okay.
But we, and I think we have some parameters that we need to work out. Is that correct?
We need to find a location, but, you know, if, on city property.
Yes.
And I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we just need to find a location. Just one thing with the Community House, though, is that is sometimes rented on Saturday to weddings and things like that.
Or boys' camp.
We can, we can always work around, yeah. As long as we can kind of advertise, like, oh, we're shifting from the sec, from the third Saturday to the fourth, or whatever. Like, it's not a, not a problem.
Okay, all right.
Just a question. Can I, maybe you guys can answer this for me or not, but like public, I mean, private property, like next to Mario, Ruchi owns that piece of land, that five acres there. I mean, would they be interested in even possibly doing stuff like that, or is it too much of a risk? If I'm a landowner and it's sitting there, I know you, he uses it for parking for keels and wheels, but that would be like a great spot, because people could see it. There's so many people on Nassau Road 1, and now you have a Farmer's Market right there. Just a suggestion. I, I'm not the landowner, so I can't tell you, but if it was my piece of land and it's sitting there, I would rent it out for whatever.
And Ruchi owns it?
Sorry?
Ruchi owns it?
Yeah.
Sam's boat, too.
So, would the.
Harris County Library be an option? They'd have to go through Harris County to do that? Because you have ample parking, you're in the park.
Well, we have to go through Harris County through, for Health Department stuff anyway. So, I mean, it wouldn't be an issue to go through.
Well, it's another location that's in Metter Park.
Right.
Because it is on Meyer, and Meyer is a, a busy, busy road.
The library right beside.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
Parking might be an issue.
Well, one of the things, too, I see this as a big rose, maybe you go from here at the community center to over to Metter Park.
Yes.
Right.
In the future, because it would just be that big. I, I don't know.
Yes.
You know, and maybe if you have multiple options, if something is happening, like, you know, this past weekend, we had the, the race, you wouldn't be doing it that time, but anyway, that type of thing.
Is the library open?
Yeah.
Wish we could have played that video.
I know. I really wish I could get.
Okay, so, so I guess, I guess the procedure is that we'll look at the ordinance, we'll get that changed, and we'll find a location.
We'd love to hear from you.
Okay.
Well.
Thank you for your time.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of the March 4, 2025 City Council meeting. 3.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance number 2025-05, or request for approval of the amendments to world-class freezer facility planned unit development. An ordinance amending the, an ordinance amending the ordinance 2024-17 for update revisions to world-class freezer facility planned unit development, consisting of 7.19 acres situated in an abstract 52 of the Ritson Morrison survey in Seabrook, Harris County, Texas. Generally located west of Old Highway 146, east of Highway 146, north of Red Bluff Road, and, and south of Port Road, being more particularly described by meets and bounds in Exhibit A attached hereto, by revising the existing planned unit development, plan regulations, restrictions, terms, and conditions, more particularly described in Exhibit B attached hereto, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict herewith, providing for a penalty not in the amount to exceed $2,000 for each day of violation of any provision hereof by inclusion into the code, and providing for severability and notice.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Well, in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. 4.0, bid awards. 4.1, consider and take all appropriate action on a bid award for RFP 2024-15 Grant Writing and Management Services, and authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for Kimley Horn and Associates and Whit O'Briens, with work authorizations and proposals for each authorized grant by City Council. Anybody got any question?
Move to approve 4.1.
Second.
Mayor, council, in your attachments, pulled up the evaluation sheet. So we did go through a bid process. We pulled this at the last council meeting. We've had a committee go through multiple proposals. We did an interview. a committee go through multiple proposals, we did an interview and are recommending Whit O'Brien and Kimberly Horn as two on-call grant writers. These would be utilized to do some searches for some of our projects that we've identified, uh, along the streets of, uh, thoroughfare streets, parks, uh, possibly the pier, um, and anything as far as that comes up, but this would be a contract, third party to assist us with grant writing.
Would this just, uh, would we only be limited to, um, to this, uh, company, or could we, or would that be still open to?
Well, if you award the two companies, uh, you're going to allow two contracts to be executed, so these two would be our vendors that we could use, uh, so what we would do in essence is if a grant, uh, comes up, or if we know a grant, or if we want them to go set out and research something, they've got the facilities and the teams to do that. The next process, these kind of firms would be, we'd ask them to write a proposal, if it's a larger grant, we would come back to council and say X dollars for, uh, writing this grant, so council would have that participation of the next step, if you would like them to proceed in that, it would be, uh, fee-based at that point.
And is it percentage, um, or how do they, how is their?
It's an hourly rate structure that they have, so they'll estimate how many hours of either research and, uh, writing and submitting, and then all that will be detailed in the task order.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Motion is second, all in favor? Thank you. 4.2, consider and take all appropriate ac, action on a bid award and proposal for RFP 2025-2-110, HMGP 4556 City of Seabrook Sewer System Portable Generators, to Aviate Enterprises Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $296,455.50, and authorize the city manager to execute all documents. This project is, is an improved HMGP grant for 90% federal reimbursement and 10% local commitment with final obligation of $29,645.55.
Move to approve, 4.2.
Second.
Any questions, Brian? Brian, you can go back and sit down. All in favor? All in favor? Okay, unanimous, thanks. 5.0, new business, 5.1, consider and take all appropriate action on simplifying the regulations regarding mobile food vendor regulations, food trucks in the city of Seabrook. Joe?
It was out the other day, and someone was telling me that our food truck, um, regulations are many, many pages, so I looked up the state regulations, and I think we should just adopt what the state requires. We pull it up real quick here, but it's, it's actually pretty, it's pretty involved anyway, but, um, they have, uh, you have, you have to have mobile food, uh, permit, Texas sales and use tax permit, local health department permit, food handler's license, business license, vehicle registration and commercial driver's license, commercial vehicle insurance, registered food service manager certificate, and alcohol, if you sold alcohol, I don't think we have to worry about that, because I don't think our food trucks are selling that. But besides that, I'm hearing that our city has even more than that, is that correct?
Well, it's on the screen. I think ours was pretty short when we wrote it.
So basically, our current ordinance is about six pages. Uh, when we went through this process, it, it, it wasn't just, I think there was a position of council at the time that we wanted to restrict mobile food vending to certain locations, and we wanted to make sure they maintained that they were mobile food vendors, they weren't becoming stationary, uh, there's a requirement that they have to, uh, go every night and, and go through the process of cleaning it and, at a, at a licensed location. We do have a permitting process, it was, it was a test ordinance to begin with, we never allowed mobile food vending in the city before. Right now, our ordinance is drafted around it being truly mobile food vending, and we also went through a consideration process that we didn't want to impact adversely our brick and mortars. And so there's even requirements in there that if you're within 300 feet of a brick and mortar restaurant, you got to have permissions from that restaurant owner to even have, operate a mobile food vending unit within 300 feet of that location. There's bathroom requirements in our current ordinance, you got to have permissions to have a, if you're going to be stationary for more than a certain period of time, you have to have permissions and access to a restroom within 300 feet of where you're setting up. So there's a lot of things in there, but it was stuff that was directed by city council and P&amp;Z that you guys wanted in the ordinance at the time. Currently in our ordinance, there's not even a requirement in the land use matrix to even have a mobile food vending park. There's nothing in our ordinance to even grant that permissions. So again, if council as a whole wants us to look at this again and go through the process of, you know, seeing what other opportunities there are out there for mobile food vending, staff's more than happy to do this. The ordinance is all written based on guidance that we.
I guess, I guess I'm a little confused as to what, what is the problem with our current one? Which, which, which items don't you like?
Well, the people that have the food trucks were just saying it's a lot more intense than just the regular, the laws of the state of Texas, and again, it's just cumbersome to them, they named, they didn't name exactly specific ones, but they said, your list is longer than other cities, so, but at the same time, when, when we, I was on council when we did this, because, uh, you know, the previous council didn't even want food trucks, and food trucks have come a long way, they're not that beater kind of truck that looks terrible, actually have some great food, and then the next thing is, a lot of those actually become brick and mortar restaurants in the cities, so I was just wanting to be more user-friendly, that's all, just, you know, and, uh, so maybe relook at this again and find out where we could, you put these trucks, but the, the food trucks have been over near, uh, genuine treasures, they've had them there before, um, but if we have no place in the city that can have them, that needs to change too, because I think we do have places in this city that food trucks could come, so that's where I'm going with that.
And damn fine pies, um, and coffee also have a food truck, and I know that they've been wanting to use it at other places besides their location, and, and they haven't had any, they've had some pushback, I guess, with, with Seabrook. Now they're going to Elago at Ed White in the mornings a couple of times recently. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, that's pretty cool to have a, at the schools and stuff, I mean, we just need to have a little bit more leeway for, I think, for these, uh, guys. So anyway, I don't know, I'd have to go through the whole six pages again, but I do, I've heard the same thing, it's, it's a lot more than, than other cities.
My biggest concern would be to protect the brick and mortar stores we have, that we don't create unfair competition, that somebody can roll in here in a truck and, and, you know, scoop up half their business, uh, that'd be my biggest concern.
Yeah, there is no sales tax garnered from the food truck. Period. And we're taking it away from our.
No, the, the sales tax is where they make the sale from, so if the food trucks in Seabrook.
But it's only a portion of it, county health department gets part, it, it's minimal.
Well, it, but it's like, I mean, that's, that's not our law, that's not what.
Well, that's what I'm saying. We don't really want them next to brick and mortars.
Oh, well, well, no one wants them right next to a brick and mortar, and I don't think a food truck would park next to a brick and mortar, but, um, there's other places they could go.
Okay.
But you definitely do get your sales tax from a food truck if they're in the city.
And I think the 300 feet, um, you know, stipulation to keep it fair and, uh, away from the brick and mortar, then yeah, let's keep that in there, but the rest of it, um, I mean, there is a lot.
So, the, the complaints that I've received most about our ordinance, and this is something that I think council's going to have to give guidance to, is currently within our ordinance, we do not allow them to hook to permanent power or to permanent water and sewer. Again, mobile vending by definition, it's mobile, and most of them want to set up on properties and make it more of a permanent type use, and they want to be, and the impact of running a generator all the time is the things that they're pushing back on most of us, that, you know, it's expensive to run a generator nine hours a day if we want to set up at a location permanently, or, you know, come back and forth but be there. So again, as we go through this conversation, I think the issues that you're going to deal with most is we require a $250 fee every 90 days, they're required to re-permit every 90 days, and we don't allow them to affix their trailer to any type of permanent utilities. Even currently at the barge, they have a permit to operate, but they can't hook that trailer that they're operating out of beyond what you guys have granted them special permissions to do. In normal conditions, they wouldn't be able to connect to permanent power, they can't put a T-pole out there with a outlet and plug that into, it's got to run off a generator. And that's how the ordinance was drafted originally, because council at the time that we created this wanted to make sure they were mobile food vending units, and it's not a situation that I saw this morning as I was coming through Clear Lake Shores at the Valera over there, there's a taco trailer now there that's permanent and it fixed in the parking lot. We got the same thing out there by the grocery store in Elago, it's the same scenario, that trailer never moves, and so again, if you guys are okay with that, staff's okay with drafting the stuff up, but I need some guidance as I work with planning and zoning to make sure what I'm communicating, the will of council is back to planning and zoning, so they understand the political position of what we're about to work on.
Well, I can't give it to you right now, but, um, definitely we'll have to draft something up and, uh, come up with, I definitely need to talk to more of the vendors and find out if, you know, if you're saying that that's what they want, I don't know if I want permanent, you know, food vendors like that, but at the same time, I'm sure there's a happy medium somewhere, and, uh, maybe we can work on that, so.
And, and that was the conversation that I had with the, the pie, uh, operation, when he was setting up over at the Bold House, he wanted to put a T-pole in that parking lot and park over there and leave, just pull up every morning, park, plug in, have a permanent. We were having the same situation at one point in time with the snow cone operation that was in Sam's boat's parking lot, we had to go out there and get him to take all his tables down and stuff, he literally anchored all that stuff to the parking lot, and it became affixed, and he was operating, uh, basically a mobile food vending park out there, how he set it up. So again, staff's okay with creating whatever council, it's just the will of council, we, I just need some guidance, so as we go through this, I'm giving you what you guys want.
So, so, this is, this, it, it says take all appropriate action. We, do I need a motion? Yeah, I need a motion.
I guess the motion would be to, um, have Sean look more into.
Why don't you, hey?
Yeah, just.
A complex.
Yeah, well, well, yeah.
Or we could.
Why don't you?
But it's on new business.
I mean, Joe, you've talked to the guys.
Way you wanted it.
This was supposed to be a discussion item, but anyway, um, yeah, uh, we're definitely have to come back to this and have more discussion because no one's ready to vote on this right now. So I guess we can table this. Yeah, why don't you? I make a motion. Get with your vendors and then get their list.
You made a motion to table.
Okay. I make a motion to table.
Second.
All in favor? Well, when he makes a table, it's, it's done. Okay. Where are we here? 5.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of task order number 2025-1 for professional inspection services under the master professional services agreement between the city of Seabrook and Project Surveillance, Surveillance Incorporated, with the Seascape Waterline project at the, in an amount not to exceed $91,821,060, and authorize the city manager to sign all associated documents.
Move to approve 5.2.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Which one?
On the motion, the previous one.
On the table?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, we need to go back, uh, we had a motion to table and a second, we need a vote, all in favor of tabling that? Thank you. 5.3, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2025-06, authorizing grant application to the Harris County Precinct 2 partnership 2025 program for Pine Gully Pier. A resolution of the city council of the city of Seabrook authorizing the submission of a partnership grant application to Harris County Precinct 2, commitment for funding, and authorizing the mayor or city manager to act as the city's executive officer, and authorize representatives in all matters pertaining to the city's participation.
Move to approve 5.3.
All right, mayor and council on this, um, I did go ahead and move forward, the county opened up their 2025 round, uh, this is the partnership projects grants that we've been traditionally putting in projects for, they look for a 50/50 match, um, as you recall, when we bid the pier of, after we got it designed, uh, it was a lot more expensive than we thought, we were around that 2.4 mark with all of the, uh, options that we had built into the drawings, and so I'm coming before you tonight, I know that the, uh, at the bottom here, you'll see that if you approve this resolution, you're looking to approve, uh, finding the funding for a 50/50 match. There is, uh, CMP grant funding, uh, part of getting a grant writer on will help us to assist and see if there's any other grants we could leverage, uh, but if this is approved, and if you want to move forward with this, this was based on the original design that was bid, and so we, as you may recall, we have 100% drawings for the more resilient, higher goal, or higher, uh, design that we have. Now, diverting, your last agenda, we talked about jackets, uh, looking at some stuff that, uh, Joe had brought up, so I have been in contact with the architect, he is looking to try to get some kind of cost estimate, um, preliminarily, if we go that way, you have to have divers, we've got to certify that the peers, uh, would be, which ones you could save and get a cost estimate on the jacket, so that would not necessarily be out, uh, I'm just simply plugging in the numbers that we had from the last bid, so we can still simultaneously try to investigate if there's another design and bring that back to council, but this is simply asking you, if you want to put this application in right now, we would be committing at this point 50%.
Are we able to take the demo money and put it back?
It's the next, it's the next.
That's the next one?
Mm-hmm.
Truly, I need to review the, the last design, do y'all even remember what it looked like?
Yeah.
It's been a while, been a year.
So this is the one with the cement pilings, and, no, I don't, I don't want to do that, I, these, these pilings are good the way they're at right now, and if they need to be fixed, all you need is the jacket, so I don't think we need to be going to cement pilings, that's overkill, no one, like I said, in this area has cement, and cement could be damaged in a, in a major hurricane as much as the wood pilings, which are a lot cheaper, so.
But that's not? Hang on, that's not what we're saying, Joe, we're saying that this is just to put our application in for a grant.
So we got a first.
We can still, we can still change the design to the jackets.
Yeah.
But, but the number we're just going to go in with is based on the original design. We have to have something, the county's going to pull this grant application.
Correct.
We're going to run out of time, and we won't, we won't have a chance to, to go after a grant, we'll lose the, we'll lose it.
Okay.
So Buddy gave us a first, I'll do a second.
Second, Jackie did?
Good.
We got a motion, a second, all in favor? Thank you. 5.4, consider and take all appropriate action on the first amend, first amendment to the agreement between Harris County and the city of Seabrook for the, on a 2022 partnership grant for Pine Gully Pier to continue with the funding of demolition of the pier.
Move to approve 5.4.
All right, mayor and council on this one, this actually dates back to 2022 when we first applied to the county. At that point, uh, internally, before we had bid the project, we thought we could build the pier back for approximately a million dollars, we had applied for a million, the county awarded us 500,000, we bid the project and it came in over $2 million. The county has since, uh, instead of completely dissolving the 500 that was on hold, they're countering back to the city, and they would like to see if you would like to just keep the 2022 grant intact, and they will split 50/50 on any demolition cost. So kind of, again, back to the design that we talked about at the previous council meeting, probably some of the peers most likely will have to be, you know, if they're not, um, certified to put the jacket around, and there could be some that needs to be demolished, some that needs to be demolished. So most likely there's going to be some demolished cost. So this is, would be an agreement that we would be able to get some funding as a fifty fifty match from the 2022 grant that was awarded to us.
No, no pilings need to be demolished. There's only one or two missing that would have to be replaced, but no, none have to be demolished.
Well, we'll get a cost estimate. So the architect's going to help us figure out how we would certify that so that we can go back with a, you know, safe structure.
Okay.
Does this have a timeframe to be used?
What's that?
They do not have a term on this one. We've been in communication. Obviously, this has been on hold since 2022. They're working with us. So really, I think council just needs to give some direction if we want to do this. If we want to go with a different design, as soon as I can get the architect to come back, if you guys, you know, we've spent a good amount of money on your resilient plan. If you want to go back to the jacket plan, council will just need to, we'll have to have some plans drawn up again for the other plan, but that'll all be up to council.
I mean, they can amend the current plan. It's pretty simple. It's just materials, right? I mean.
Just cost. Yeah, it's just, I'll have to get the architectural to estimate on that.
Okay. So they're saying, basically you're saying five hundred thousand dollars that they've already approved that we can use towards the demo, but we still have in question the actual posts. I was just out there the other day. There's, I mean, there are the pieces that go, you know, along the walkway and some pieces of the rail left. So I guess that could go towards that. Is that what?
Well, we're going to have to get the architect to come out. We need to find out how you certify the peers, which ones could be, put a jacket around, which ones could not. We'll need to go back and have them do drawings for the original design, keeping everything at the same height, going back with wood and not raise it like we did in the other plan. So it, it's really up to council. I think if we go back with this original plan, then, you know, we just, if we have a declared disaster, we'll be repairing that one as opposed if we have non-declared, you know, like with Nicholas, it was a non-declared disaster. So we just need to decide if y'all went the lower design or the higher design based on what could happen in the future.
So we could still use that though and, and not, I mean, the, the money that they're, for the grant and not, we can still decide what all needs to be demoed.
Right. That can come back to you guys on design. As soon as I get the architect to come back with some alternates, then you guys can decide on that. The demolition, there's nothing specific on here other than it's going to be tied to the pier and you're demolishing in that phase. So as long as we can prove to the county, it's a demolished.
So we've already, we've already paid for the original design?
We did.
So now we're, we need to find out what it's going to cost us to redesign. Can we get a bid on that and see what that is? Because that, that seems to go backwards to me.
That, that would be the plan. I'm, I'm going to rely on them to figure out the plans and the proposal to bring back to council. I have no idea on the jacket. He's working with a contractor right now that has done the type of project with the jackets. So he's going to come back with recommendations on how you would certify the peers, what the cost, estimated cost would be for that type of project. So y'all can look at both options.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor of five point four? All opposed? Okay, unanimous. Six point one, discussion, discussion regarding a farmer's market at Rex Metter Park or Seabrook Community House. Jackie?
We kind of, so I guess what we need to do is have them come or have city staff look into the different.
We've already discussed this.
I know.
Okay. We'll move on. Six point, six point two, discussion regarding the possibility of the sale of two city-owned lots located on Shady Lake Drive.
Okay, these, I don't know if anybody's had a chance to go down Shady Lake Drive lately, but it's, it's right by Lake Point Forest or right behind it. One of the lots is pretty much all underwater, but the other one is significantly large. And right above that, they're developing five houses. That whole, that one side of the street hasn't been developed ever. And so now they've got the majority of the street with five houses. We have, we acquired this property, I think in nineteen eighty for a sewer line.
Right. And we did check. At this point, we don't have the plans that we would need that sewer connection that they purchased it for back then. So there's no objection on staff.
So we're basically holding on to this lot. And I think I don't see a reason why we should be. I would love to see, I mean, they're using it. Do you have the pictures that I sent? Some of the neighbors are using it for parking. When I drove down there, our Seabrook truck was leaving with the lawnmower. I mean, so we're maintaining it. There's a little concrete bench there. It's looked like it's been there for decades. Either have one of the neighbors' residents an opportunity to, to purchase that or have that, maybe that builder would like to buy that and, and he could probably build four houses depending on the way he's got the other houses built pretty close. Do you have those pictures? Okay.
What was the process in selling a city property?
Appraisal.
So we included, there is a process when you have city to dispose of property. So I've attached the local government code. So if there's not an exception, which in this case, we can't find an exception, and I've talked with the city attorney and he agrees. So we would need to put a public notice out. We'll need to get an appraisal to set a base bid. And it would need to be a public, essentially like auction process. So whoever the high bid, we would come back to council and you would award it, much like you do your bid awards.
So who sets the cap? Do we get, we get that somebody and somebody tells us what, what the properties work and that's the cap we set?
Yep.
Based on the appraisal.
It's appraisal.
Could this be made into a park?
We actually, at one point internally, we were looking at CIP projects and we're looking for a second kayak launch. So a couple of councils ago, that was a CIP project. Then when we did the waterline project, you know, we tore that whole area up. So we had postponed it at that point. So the problem with the kayak launch, just internally talking, was we're not sure how the neighbors would appreciate, you know, if you're not used to that traffic coming down and having trailers parking and make it a city park in that neighborhood. So that, that project was taken off the CIP.
I have a question. Did you talk to the folks on Shady Lake Drive?
I haven't. There's only ten. I mean, over there, I, I said I would be more than happy to go knock on their doors and let them know.
Yeah, because, you know, one of the things that was talked about at our city planning and, you know, all that is the lack of access to water in the city of Seabrook. This makes one. You know, it's kind of like Jeff Larson said, when you move to a place, you got to look at everything. These people should know that the city of Seabrook owns that. And at one point, there could have been a kayak launch there. Well, they, you know, it's like, I, I also know that there's not streams and streams of trucks coming to the kayak launch on Main Street. There's a few, but there's not, it's not like this, you know, steady traffic thing. And I don't think there's going to be forty or fifty kayak people launching from there. I'd think two, three at the most would ever be there at one time. And I think that would be probably a good idea to have a piece of land like that to put another kayak launch. And then that's another feather in the cap of Seabrook is we have multiple kayak launches. Here's another access point to, to water, which what people want. I think it's a pretty neat idea, but I guess we could look into that more.
Well, I, I would love, just let's do something with it. Sitting on it is doing nothing. So this is really close to my neighborhood. I have no problem with, like I said, going to talk to the neighbors and see how they feel. So with that, I'd like to table this until the next meeting.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? No, for tabling.
For voting. Good, good job.
Seven point O, routine business. Seven point one, presentation on monthly financial report. Mike gave it to us. Oh, there it is. I want to hear you earn that award.
I'm sorry?
I said, I want to hear you earn that award.
Good evening, mayor and council. I would like to start off by thanking all the directors for all your hard work on, on the city being recognized for their trans, financial transparency, all y'all's hard work that y'all go in during budget and implementation of the budget is, is greatly appreciated. So thank y'all. So we are five months into our fiscal year. So basically a little more than forty percent of the year has passed. We've had some improvement on our revenues collected. We've collected a total of seventy percent of our budgeted revenues in the general fund. Our expenditures are right at thirty, thirty-nine percent of the total budget, what was budgeted. We're currently forecasting a million dollars going back into fund balance if these projections hold true. So that, as you can see, we're, we're currently at a nine million dollar fund balance. So that would increase your fund balance to ten million. Again, I'll allow, once, once we post this online, y'all can review this. It's basically just highlights the variances between the actuals and the budget amount and our actuals from this year to last year as a comparison of where we're at. And this is the general fund revenues. This is our sales tax graph. Again, we are a little under budget for, actually February did not make it on there. February, actually, we collected two hundred and forty thousand in the general fund. So we were over on this month, but we are still showing a slight deficiency in our actual to budget. I'll update that before posting it online. Just another slide with the missing number. My apologies. Shows our graph representative, representation of our expenditures by departments, if y'all like, like graphs. Here's where we're showing our forecasted numbers to our budget on personnel and the general fund. As you can see, we're, we've had some turnover. So it's created some surplus on those personnel lines. Materials is forecasting pretty, pretty close to coming in on, on our budget. Typically, we see that, that close out pretty close to, to the actuals. Same with services, as you can see right now, are to date, we've only spent one point two million. What we were budgeting to spend up to this point is one point nine. That trend is more online by the, by the end of the year with a little bit of a surplus coming in under budget at a hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then our capital items, again, pretty, pretty close to on target on our forecast. Enterprise fund, we are lower on our revenues than, than we, we'd like to be. A lot of this is stem, stems from the water and sewer expense, expenses. The, the less we spend on those services, there's typically less revenues that come in. So as you can see, our services for that is showing a three hundred thousand dollar under run on the budget on the expense side. And that really drives the water and sewer service collections. Overall, the fund balance projection is we're, we're at two point six million and we're projecting to in the year at two point eight million. Again, the revenues for water and sewer, actuals to budget and actuals to actuals last year. Here's the graph representing our water sales. Enterprise fund expenses by department, water, wastewater and billing and collections. And then we go into personnel. So we, we did have some hurricane expenses on, on several categories where public works was put into action. So those will, will likely have to come back to city council for an amendment for those, those expenditures for the hurricane expenses. We also had a retirement and that's escalated our water salaries. And overall, our supplies seem to be on track for our forecast, meaning our budget coming in under budget slightly. Services, same, same thing. There's, this is, this goes back to the, what I was explaining about the revenues, the, the fact that we're under budget on both water and sewer expenses. This is where the, we buy our water from the city of Pasadena. So anytime those, those numbers are down, we're also down on our revenue collection. Our infrastructure, we're showing slightly over budget. That might just be a, need to adjust the forecast. Brian and Jesse typically run those projects pretty, pretty close to budget. Coming in under budget on our capital items by fifty thousand. And this is our debt payments to date. That's a hot topic right now. We're enterprise fund, as y'all know, has one point five million dollars of debt obligations due this year. And so we're on track to meet those obligations. And our transfers out. Moving on to hotel, oh, before I, does anybody have any questions, comments? Are y'all still awake?
Yeah. Hey, why, why would a retirement affect water? That's what you had said.
Well, that was in the personnel category. I'm, when Kevin recently retired, we obviously did not budget enough for his, all his payout on retirement monies. It could also, because they're not off on an enterprise fund, his salary was split, not enterprise fund, sewer. It could be that all of it got charged to water. So I'll have our department look at that and see. Hotel, we are, again, we're, we've collected about fifty percent of our budgeted revenue for the year. So that's a plus. Although we did lower our budget number this year, it's nice to see that it's coming. to see that it's coming in a little higher than we expected. As you can see, there's a $50,000 over budget in revenue for hotel occupancy. Our department has done a good job staying within their budget. If things hold true, it looks like we'll be 50,000 under budget. Here, you can see our total fund balance of 1.6 million. This one's kind of shown a little different. I'm highlighting the 1.2 million that has been committed by council for the Plaza incentive. So, your, your overall available fund balance is 646,000, kind of your unreserved fund balance, if you will. EDC, again, would be nice if sales tax would pick up. Hopefully, we'll have a influx of sales in the coming spring and summer months. Overall, it's still pretty healthy on, on revenues. The interest income is helping out there on the revenue side. Our expenses are, are down. Again, I know the city manager's working with the EDC board on some potential projects being funded out of, out of that fund, so we'll see where, where we end up on that at the end of the year. Right now, we're projecting, we had originally planned or budgeted for nearly 900,000 in incentives to go out, so a kind of a deficit spend, reducing our fund balance from 4.1 to 3.2 as it stands. We're looking for a drop of half of that to just 3.7 million. Again, just some comparisons, month by month, prior year, budget, and a graph for you guys. And our, another, just comparing our budget to actual and actual to actual on the EDC sales tax. This one has February, yay. As you can see, February was a good month. We collected 117,000 in EDC. Brings our actual to, to budget almost right on target, less than a percent off. Crime district, same thing with the sales tax and, and interest on the revenue side. We're, we're down in sales tax, but the interest income is kind of keeping us afloat there. Police chief's doing a good job with their department on holding down, we're sticking with the budget, and as it stands, we are projecting $83,000 return to fund balance on our forecast. So, with that, I'll open up to any questions and comments you might have.
Any questions, Council? Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome.
Mayor, if I might, if there's a way we can change the order, we have a special counsel waiting on the executive session item.
Sure, yeah. Okay, we'll call the executive session. 8.1, Section 551.071, conduct a closed executive session to consult with the city attorney and special counsel for legal matters relating to 2022-18911, DH Fund LP versus City Seabrook Edall in the 127th Judicial District, Harris County, Texas, George V III PC. It is 7:50.
Yes, morning.
Certainly did want to do that.
Yeah.
Could be any choice.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is it like fun?